I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
All present.
Correspondent report.
Well, let's start out with the proposed literacy legislation that's in the state of Wisconsin right now. It's going back to call it the science of reading, it's going back into the direction of phonics, which is how we all learn how to read. And it's based off this reading program that they have in Mississippi, they call it the Mississippi miracle, and they've seen just an increase in reading test scores, that that's kind of where they're trending it after. From what I understand, Senator Dewey Strobel and our own Jill Kitchens worked several months with the DPI on this legislation. Superintendent Jill Underlee is against it, she doesn't like the fact that there's a third grade retention requirement in this, which is harmful to our learners, families, and communities. There's like four pages of provisions with this legislation, but based on what, you know, she has an issue with the third grade retention, I'm thinking, okay, so we've got kids at third grade that can't read up to their level, so we just keep passing them on? Do they ever catch up? No, they don't ever catch up, in most cases. There is a, you have to have a model, and it's a requirement, you know, you have to let the parents know, but there is a requirement that the, we have to provide services and monitoring and supports to people who doesn't read at grade level, and then there's intensive summer reading program that we have to provide that would get them up. So, I'm kind of thinking this would be a big issue, but maybe, do you? I mean,
It's too early to tell.
There's like fifty million dollars or something associated, you know, in the budget for this.
It's always hard to tell, because it can be a good idea with some bad aspects. I mean, what, what I sort of always, the hair on my, the back of my neck goes up when they start regulating how many times a year you have to do an assessment, because
Well, that's in here.
Yeah, the teachers are already spending so much time testing and doing assessments, and we want to be allowing them to teach. I like the fact-
But if the flip side is, these kids are going to become better readers, I would think that's all worth it.
As long as the testing assessments are reasonable frequency, and the whole third grade holding behind, I would hope that they would allow, I mean, I would hope that we would have targeted kids and give them the support before that, but I think that should be something that
And there's exceptions.
Parents should be able to be involved in those decisions as well.
Absolutely, and that's part of the parent component, is part, is in that too, and there's exceptions for certain peoples, because you know, some of the kids aren't, you know, are capable-
So, we'll have to see, like he said, we'll see-
See how it plays out.
-comes down the line.
The Joint Finance Committee has eliminated the high poverty aid, which for our district means thirty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars, which, when you look at all the districts, it's in a lot of, a lot of money, because like the Green Bay schools, it's over a million, so I don't know how they're gonna, what made that, how they're gonna plan on making that up. Let's see here. The Budget Committee approved a ten million dollar boost in general purpose revenue for the Department of Justice. Governor Evers wanted to put in ninety-two million, but they approved ten. They've got, they've got twelve point two full-time equivalent positions that are being funded right now, there's more than that, but the twelve point two being funded right now with COVID-19 funds that are going to end. Now, we all know, we've got these COVID funds, you don't use that money for reoccurring expenses. So apparently, they work. So I don't know how that's going to play out, what they're going to do.
So, along the safety situation, that reporting, the hotline was part of it, right?
Correct. Speak Up, Speak Out is part of the Office of School Safety.
Yes.
And that was something that we were interested in, in doing, and Jesse had told me it was not funded.
No, no, it's not going to be funded, because their COVID money ran out. Let's see. The governor and the legislator reached a deal on the K-12 funding and shared revenue. There's over one billion in new spendable revenue to public schools. Couple of things, two hundred and twenty-five dollars per pupil increase in the first fiscal year, great, setting aside fifty million dollars for the improvement in literacy, reading and literacy, good, providing per pupil an increase for choice in independent charter schools, investing thirty million over the BIA MIA to continue the governor's initiative on support-based school mental health services, great, reaching, I'd like to, I hope this happens, reaching a thirty-three point three percent reimbursement for special education. Wouldn't that be wonderful? What is it right now? Twelve?
Uh, no, twenty-seven, I think.
Is it up to twenty-seven? Okay, okay, so that would be, you know, you think it's only about six, you know, but that's, it's a lot of money. And increasing the low revenue sleep from ten thousand to eleven thousand per student. The voucher per student increase increases, go from K-8 from eighty-three ninety-nine to ninety-five hundred, nine through twelve goes up to twelve thousand, charter school payments are eleven thousand dollars per student, and I look at these numbers, and I, and I know that that's what they get, because they get more from the government than the public schools do, per student. Yeah, we make up the rest from the taxpayer, but they don't make up the rest from the taxpayer, they get it from, from the state. And then, the last thing is, we can nominate your, a business partner, if we've got a business partner that we think has been, you know, partnering up with the school and, and has does a good job, we can, we can nominate them, has to be by August eleventh. So I, and I know there's, we have a lot of people that we partner with, so it'd be nice to recognize.
For what?
Oh, with the school district.
For recognition at the state level?
Yeah, well, at recognition at the, at Wasbaw.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, so, yeah, that's it.
Last under additional comments. Okay, very enough, we will keep moving. Jennifer, fourth CISA report.
Well, our last meeting was the Wednesday before last, and it was their annual dinner celebration appreciation meeting, and so Mick was honored for serving on the CISA Board of Control for twenty years. Boy, a lot of input and wisdom came through that, hey? So then, the biggest part of our conversation during the meeting was about the literacy bill that Pat mentioned. The woman who did a lot of the behind-the-scenes writing with kitchens of that bill is a Gibraltar School Board member, and she was there talking about it quite passionately, you know, she had a kid who had a lot of literacy struggles in grade school that she did not feel were appropriately identified and addressed, and that's what ultimately landed her on the Gibraltar School Board, was, you know, her advocacy for change, and then she started the work on this bill with kitchens, you know, and there were pieces that she was very frustrated about, you know, that had gotten in the hands of other legislators and had been tweaked, but, but, you know, she still fervently believes that there's a lot of good in that, and, you know, you gotta compromise to make things happen. So, you know, one of the concern, and, and they both also emphasized that everything on that literacy bill is constantly changing, and so what you hear one day or hour even, it may not be the same as what it is at another time. So as of the sixteenth, part of what was in there was a development of a reading council with six appointees from the majority party and three from the Department of Public Instruction. So there's concern there that that will lead to further politicization of the literacy work that we are doing within the state. So that was a concern. I had announced at the last meeting that we were able to bring a guest to that dinner, and said that if anybody was interested in learning more about CISA, they were welcome. Amy Johnson accepted my invitation, and so she got to meet some people as well, and she has a long history as an educator herself. So our next meeting is July twelfth at 5:15 PM in Maple Gose in Green Bay, CISA has a building there, which I will not be able to attend, nor any further CISA meetings.
Thank you for doing the great job for the meetings you were able to attend.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jennifer? All right, the next two agenda items, there is nothing, so did anyone sign up to speak?
No.
All right. Board President announcements, well, we'll get right into it. Want to thank Jennifer Humor for her service, she has submitted a letter of resignation, she and her family are moving to Costa Rica, which sounds absolutely exciting and wonderful, and we wish you the best. Anything you would like to say to the board?
Well, yeah, I thank you for those who have been on here and brought so much experience, it's been really a tremendous opportunity to learn from you folk, and thank you, those who have come on since me, for, you know, continuing to be invested in education, I think that's great. It's harder almost for me to leave school board than it is my church, because I love the work that we do here. You know, I really feel like it makes a big difference, and this school is a pillar of the community, really so deeply invested in making kids' lives and families and our community as a whole a stronger place. So, yeah, I applaud Katie Horne, David Robertson, Katie Servie, Marie Ott, oh my gosh, you guys, you just pour your hearts out to our kids, and I am so thankful that my own children have had an opportunity to be blessed by your presence and, and the way that you give and serve and do everything that makes this school the most magical place I've ever been.
Well, I wish we could just end the meeting on that. That was lovely, but thank you so much for all your hard work for these last couple weeks, and we hope to hear from you and how you're doing in your new digs.
Well, we can't quite sever the knot, Maggie's going to be finishing high school through the Venture Academy and virtually, so we will still be actively engaged in the life of school this year.
Wonderful, all right.
And she can inform us what you're doing.
That's right, it's a two-way street there. So along with your resignation, obviously, we will have an opening on the school board. The way it works when somebody resigns, where there is still a part of a term left, is that the board appoints somebody into that position, and then they serve until the next election, which would be the spring election, at which point they would run again to be elected by the, by the community. We have the information up there, any interested applicants need to submit a letter of interest with a brief description of the reason for wanting to join the board. That letter of interest basically should be an email to my email address, which we put up there, and if you don't have a way of writing it down, we can certainly, you know, call the school. We'll be accepting the letters of interest up until the day before our next school board meeting, at which point the board will review them, and then at that, after that point, we will, we will schedule interviews or a meeting or something, depending on the amount of applicants we get and everything, so we will take a look at it at that meeting. So, basically, almost a month, and we will be advertising this in other manners too. I think we'll be, it'll be on our website, right, Jesse? Or either Jesse, both Jesses, and we'll probably run it in the local paper, the newspaper as well, to give anybody that is interested an opportunity to put their letter in. It would be my hope that anybody that is interested, it's obviously an opportunity to see what being on the school board is like, but I would hope that somebody that applies would also have in mind of, if it seemed like a good fit, that they would want to continue and run in the election, so that we're not, you know, doing a constant turnover. So that would be something that we would be looking at in terms of applicants, but, yeah, so, anybody that goes along with that. And then, before I go on to the next agenda item, I just want to remind the current board members of the Summer Leadership Institute in July at the High Regency in Green Bay, if anybody's interested, it's the fourteenth and fifteenth, and if you're interested, obviously, let Tammy know, and she can get you registered. So, it's nice when there's something in Green Bay, so that it doesn't require travel or overnight with people around, so. Okay, we'll move on to administration reports. Jesse?
All right, so, a couple takeaways for this evening, want to look at our current budget, I want to highlight our food service program and our Fund Fifty, and then give a brief update on our facility study update, and we'll close it out with summer maintenance projects that we're working on, so. All right, you've seen this slide before, so when reading the budget that you have in front of you that I put out, again, remember looking for ease, the negative is opposite, so it actually equals a positive, R stands for the revenues. So, of our general operating fund, we're at about seventy-seven percent of our total expected revenue collected, and we spent about seventy-seven of our projected expenditures. You can see that, obviously, we're at the end of a fiscal period here in June, we just submitted all of our WISE grant applications last week, and it takes about fourteen days for those to be processed and deposited into our accounts, so that will be happening within the next week or so, which will bring us back up to that hundred percent, you would see. Fund Twenty-seven, again, we've had about thirty-five percent of our expected revenues, and we've spent about ninety-three percent, and you'll see later on in the meeting why that difference is there, we need to move money from general fund over to special ed to make up for that difference in cost, so. For our Fund Fifty, which is our food service, we have actually collected above what we projected, so a hundred and twenty percent, twenty-six percent of revenue, that is due to a twenty thousand dollar grant that we got from the Greater Green Bay Foundation that would go towards some of this, as long, as well as increase more students participating in our food service, that we did not expect from, when comparing from last year. We spent about ninety-three percent of our projected budget this year so far. For our Fund Eighty, again, we're over what we expected with our revenue at a hundred and twelve percent, and we've spent about a hundred and one percent of what we, so a little bit over, but we made up for that with what we collected. Any questions about the budget that you have in front of you?
It's coming together, are they at the end of the year?
It is, yes, we're in the process of moving things around to cover certain areas, which will be an action item later on in the board meeting, so, but the budget's looking really, really solid for closing out this one, as well as our projected one for twenty-three, twenty-four, so. I want to talk a little bit about our food service department. Again, each month, I'm trying to highlight just a couple different things to educate the board, as well as the public, and I thought this was a great opportunity in June to highlight their food service. So the goal of the food service program is obviously to provide healthy nutritious meals for our students, so they can be successful in school, school day. This food service program is self-supporting program that provides breakfast and lunch. We follow the National School Lunch Program, the School Breakfast Program, and the Wisconsin School Milk Program. So, all of our students are eligible for free breakfast within our district, and that began in two thousand twenty-one due to federal assistance that can, kind of came along with COVID that has continued. Our lunch prices, those vary depending on the grade level and the economic status of the families. We continue to encourage lunch participation by our students, we continue to offer them choices in terms of meals, that includes a daily salad bar that's offered at all grades, and we're proud that much of that lettuce is grown here in our school with our hydroponic units. You can see our meal prices, so again, breakfast is free for any students, if an adult would take a breakfast, it's two dollars and fifty-six cents, full-priced lunch is two dollars and fifty-five cents at the elementary, two dollars and ninety-five cents at the middle school and high school, and four dollars and sixty-five cents for an adult. If you qualify for reduced status, it would be forty cents for the elementary student to take a lunch, forty cents for the middle school and high school student, and then obviously, adults don't qualify for free or reduced prices, so. One of the items that was really important for me as a leader, as well as our administration, was student voice in menu items, so that was a focus this year, there was a student panel that came together several times this year, offered input into what items we're offering on our menu, specifically here at the middle school and high school, and so the takeaway from that was we were able to create a second choice menu that is offered to our seventh through twelfth graders, and those items are more deli-style, so wraps and salads and cold sandwiches, and they've been very successful this year, and we hope to continue it next year, so.
Is that why we had more kids doing more?
It could be a really good, it could be a factor, yeah, it could be. So in twenty-two, twenty-three, the district served thirty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-one breakfasts and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-four lunches throughout the school year. When you think of, we're a district of a size of about six hundred and eighty students, that is a fair amount of meals that is served throughout the year, and hats off to our food service workers, to Mary Brightlow for all the work that she does in ordering and preparing the meals, you know, it would not be possible to serve all these meals without our food service staff, so. You can see how they're broken up, free meals served in terms of breakfasts and lunches, the reduced-priced meals for breakfast and lunch, full-priced meals, and then the total. So the free and reduced percentages in our district, they broke that up by buildings, so our elementary school is about fifty-six percent free or reduced, our middle school and high school is at forty-three percent, Elgoma Venture Academy or AVA is just over forty-six percent, if you average it out, it comes to fifty percent district-wide. These numbers are important, because this is one criteria that is used at the state level for receiving federal assistance through Title One programming, as well as a few others, so. And then to qualify for these, it's obviously based on your economic status of your family, and then families have to fill out an application each year for that. So the operation of our food service, we operate under federal and state programs that require the food service department to meet nutritional, financial, and record-keeping requirements, and those are reviewed by Department of Public Instruction, or DPI, annually. We receive reimbursement from the, most of it through the federal government, there is a little bit of state aid for the number of meals and milk programs that are served, so. You'll hear something called point-of-sale in food service, meaning that when a student gets their lunch, they have to be checked out by someone who is qualified to look at their meal and make sure that it's reimbursable, so there needs to be three food items on their tray to be considered reimbursable, and the milk includes one of them, so. We work hard to make sure that we're meeting these requirements from the federal and state Federal reimbursement for food service, so the next slide that you're going to see is kind of how much we've received in federal reimbursement over the last couple of years, you'll see a dip for this coming, or this year, because we saw such an increase during the pandemic that was provided to districts. And so, in twenty-two, twenty-three, some federal reimbursements were handled pre-pandemic, and then some were also dropped as well, so you can see how that dip has kind of gone down this year. And I would anticipate that dip probably to continue to trend down over the next couple of years, so.
Do you have any idea why it was so high in two thousand nineteen?
Um, that would have been, let's see, was that the start of the pandemic, or was that-
That would have been the start of the pandemic, yeah.
Oh, first half, okay, twenty nineteen. And then it was down the next year, that's where-
Funding for food service, so we're a self-supporting program, the food service has not received any funds from the general operating fund or Fund Ten, because of that, we are allowed to have a fund balance for Fund Fifty, and that is, there's some requirements that I'll show you here. We're projected to have about two hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars in our fund balance at the end of this year. Ideally, that is a little bit high than what most, the DPI or the state level would like to see, we're allowed to have basically a three-month operating budget of what our food service department normally operates at. So what we're trying to do is spend that money down, we're purchasing some new equipment, we've increased our staffing in food service, and we're trying to buy more local foods, which obviously are going to be at higher cost as well. We think trying to keep that local, those local dollars within the community is important, so. It's really clear or important to understand that this funds are separate than the general operating funds, so, again, this is only food service funds, so they need to go to, be spent on food service items, such as equipment in the kitchens, kitchens, lunchroom tables, food, those types of things, so. Any questions about food service? It's a very complex department to understand, but very exciting though, and it's important, because our kids need to have, obviously, be fed during the school day, so they can learn, so.
They have to keep track of everything, they keep track of every, every cart of milk, it, it just blew my mind when I was helping out in there, oh, I'm a job, you can't go yet, I've got to count this. But bookkeeping in there is, is
It's a job of itself.
It's a job, it's a job, yes it is.
Yeah. All right, and we'll move on to our facility study update, so our planning committee met for a second time at the end of May, that committee's made up of teachers, administrators, and two board members. We dug into and kind of looked closely at what are some of the district needs and wants in our building. Final facility study will be presented to the full board in July at our July meeting, and the next step will be to involve the community asking for input, and we'll have a survey that we'll ask them to participate in, so. That is all I have for facility study, I want to move into summer maintenance projects, I believe I have three slides here of items that our facility department is working on over the summer. The first one is updating all lighting in the classrooms at the elementary school, we're going, transitioning to LED lights at the elementary school, there may be a few extras, so we're hoping to put them into the hallways then at the elementary school as well. We removed a dead ash tree at the elementary school, that was in the, the main entrance by the Performing Arts Center there. We took out some old cabinets in the art room and are having them replaced with some wooden ones. The crew is pouring some concrete pads at the dumpster for, at the Pack of Pups childcare, and then also pouring a slab by the large shed here at the high school, and that will help with some plowing issues, because it's been digging up the, the ground and making a big pile of mud, basically, so.
Are we, are, who's doing the cement work on that?
Our guys don't do it all themselves, they just have a cement company come in and dump it, so.
Jesse, is there any grant or Focus on Energy money to switch the LEDs?
Um, there is some that we can apply for, and that'll be part of, they'll talk about that with the facility study, yeah, absolutely, there's plenty of funds out there for the Focus on Energy. We've, as a district, we've collected some already over the last couple of years, so.
A lot of what was done in the new addition of the elementary school took advantage of, of energy updates-
And solar panels.
And, and our solar panels have gotten nice.
Yeah, I feel very confident that McKinstry, who we're working with, they are experts in knowing all of that, so. We're going to redo some landscaping at the child- Uh, we're gonna redo some landscaping at the childcare center. Um, you'll see some changes in the front of the building, pulling out some of the larger trees that have just overgrown. Um, we have installed, or will be installing, new floor in the small room at the wellness center, so kind of that, um, that room right off of that entrance when you come in by the equipment. Um, the floor is very slippery for the community members that were coming in there, so. Uh, we have installed new flooring and pathfinders already, um, and we plan to redo the kitchen area there. We'll be installing some drain tile and fill in the low spots in front of the high school. That's an area that always seems to flood in, um, spring, or when we get heavy rain. And it's hard to maintain or cut the grass there. Uh, we're gonna work on a maintenance list of some items at Pack of Pups childcare. Big one would be the paint on the fence is peeling. And so that's an issue, obviously, when you've got little kids that are playing in that area. Paint chips are coming off and everything seems to go in the mouth, right, with little kids, so. Um, there's also some paint on the playground equipment that needs to be either touched up or power washed off as well. And then we are working on fixing the roof walls at the elementary school. There's some brick that has cracked or broken, so we're gonna be sealing that up. We're gonna cover the front entrance overhang here at the middle school and high school with aluminum. The gym floors here at the middle school and high school have been refinished. They'll be going down to the elementary school to work on that next. And then obviously, the summer maintenance of waxing and cleaning all the classrooms, the hallways, office spaces. Um, that is a task in and of itself, and a big thank you to our facility crew for all the work they do. We have five summer, um, high school students that have been hired that are supporting and doing some of this work as well, so a big thank you to them, so. That is all I have for my report.
Questions to come. All right. Elementary principals report, Katie.
Okay, starting with summer school, our twenty-twenty-three summer school wrapped up last week Friday. It was another successful year. Um, we had two-hundred-and-thirty-one students. Nineteen teachers taught a combined total of twenty-three classes. Um, we still have a few other things throughout the summer that we still count towards summer school. Um, we have a cooking class coming up in July, leadership through High Adventure is also a part of summer school. Um, but that's a really great start once again. We had a few new classes this year, alphabet adventure, moving with math, sticky squishy slimy, history of Elgoma, summer choir. Um, a personal favorite, Puerto Rican Latin cooking, taught by our ELL coordinator, this is Missario. Um, versus was combined with basketball camp, um, we had a baseball and softball camp. Um, so we were able to offer quite a bit, again, this year. Um, a huge thank you to our summer school coordinator, Lindsay Harmon, for all of her hard work. She has a wonderful way of, um, making something that is very complex and takes a lot of time and effort, such as, um, you know, collecting registrations, organizing kids into sessions, and then changing some of those after the fact, and then changing them again. Uh, but she just has a wonderful way of making something very complicated, um, look very easy. She does a wonderful job, so thank you to her. Um, part of summer school is always our summer musical. This year, um, the performance was Willy Wonka. That wrapped up with performances Friday evening and then Saturday afternoon. Um, there were eighty-five participants, so that includes everybody from the performers to behind-the-scenes crew. Um, and then according to Mr. Robertson here, it was very well attended and it was a lot of fun. Um, so thank you to everyone who was involved in that. One thing that I wanted to add on here, um, that I think is really neat, a, a bright spot, if you will, that came in after the agenda was printed, um, our third grade, one of our third grade teachers, Sam D. Hager. Um, during her intervention time this year, she had a group of students and they worked on some enrichment activities. And what they worked on was creating a book, um, so they created this book, they published this book, and they just found out that as part of the National Book Challenge, they were a finalist. So they made it, um, they were recognized as one of the top fifty books that were created by students, top fifty out of seventy-five thousand entries. So I think that's pretty cool.
Wow, I'd say that's.
Yeah, I thought that was pretty awesome. Um, the, the book that they created was called An Adventure Around the World. So each of the students, um, picked a country, but then it was really cool. They, um, wrote a letter from that country, shared some interesting facts, um, and then they kind of tossed it to the next country, so. You know, if they were in Antarctica, they were like, you know, you no longer need your Roger Parka. Why don't you get out your flip-flops, 'cause we're headed to Puerto Rico, or, you know, so they kind of had a nice flow to the story, so. Um, I'll be sharing, um, more of that on Facebook. We have a little video. And then we also have just a little write-up that she gave to us, so congratulations to them, I thought that was really, um, awesome. I wanted to share that right away. Um, and then lastly, I just wanted to provide you with our semester review for AGR, which is our Achievement Gap Reduction Program. Um, in your board packets, you should have been able to take a look at what our performance objectives were from the beginning of the year and then what we have left at the end of the year. Um, as you can see, we, we did fairly well. Um, this is one of our, um, I mean, I feel like we're doing really well in terms of moving all kids forward. Kindergarten and both reading and math, students met both those goals. In first grade, students met the math goal, um, and fell short on the reading goal. Second grade was the opposite, where they fell short on the math goal, met the reading goal. And then third grade was really close on both, but did not meet either of those. Um, as I kind of reflected on this, um, a kind of a couple of things come to mind. But I think one thing that we've been having discussions around at the elementary school is the importance of consistency. Um, consistency in what we're teaching, how we're teaching it. Um, we all do a really great job and are really great at teaching kids, but we have to better align ourselves across grade levels and even within the same grade level so that all of our students are getting this thing consistently from year to year. Um, so I feel like that's kind of represented in this, um, you know, especially as I look at how first grade students did compared to second grade students. The first grade students met math goal, met the math goal, but did not, not meet the reading goal. And then in second grade, it was flip-flopped. So it's just kind of interesting to see how that kind of plays out in the course of one short year, which I think is a reflection of just that consistency that we need to work on, um, a little bit. And we're, you know, we're doing some really great things in the area of math, um, implementing the Bridges curriculum all the way through fourth grade for this coming year, starting with this upcoming school year. Um, we have teachers coming actually this week, Wednesday and Thursday. Um, we have a trainer coming from Bridges to help us with that. And then in terms of literacy, we've been just doing a lot of work around kind of some science of reading line stuff, actually, just more of that phonics and phonemic awareness and very explicit instruction. We have some really great things, we just have to put it together and we have to move it all in the same direction, so. Um, that's kind of what we have been working on. Any questions with that? Always, always a lot.
I have a question in terms of the literacy.
Yeah.
And I'm sure you've been studying the new stuff coming from the state. How different would that be in terms of what we are doing now?
The, it's actually really interesting. I attended a science of reading, um, workshop last week that Cesar Seven put on. And, um, there was a speaker there, Dr. Rachel Gabriel, and she talked a lot about like education reform. Um, and she feels like the science of reading concept falls into this education reform bucket. And the thing about education reform is you have these really great, um, theoretical like best practices, but then what happens is all the politics get into it, and so many people like, you know, have their different opinions about it, no matter where they stand on whatever side of the spectrum, but it kind of bogs down from the good research. Um, and she kind of used the metaphor of, um, like, a driver. So she said, you know, you could give a good driver any kind of car, you know, from a two-thousand-dollar, you know, twenty-five-year-old car to, you know, top-of-the-line sports car. And if it's a good driver, they're gonna drive just fine, the car will work just fine. But if the driver isn't an adequate driver, then, you know, it kind of falls apart, no matter what they're driving. So he kind of related, she kind of related that to like the infrastructure. So her whole point was, you could have the best curriculum, you could have the best, um, teachers, you could have the best students, you could have the best assessments, but if everyone's not working together and using it and all on the same page, then it's gonna fall apart. So it was a really interesting, um, perspective. We actually, um, in the primary grades especially, have a lot of science of reading-aligned resources that we use. Our phonics program is science of reading-aligned, our phonemic awareness program is science of reading-aligned. We have some interventions that we've been using that are very much science of reading-aligned. So it's really just taking all of those tools and putting them together. Um, at the end of the workshop, they had two different school districts represented, and they talked about, each district talked about their journey with some science of reading implementation types of things. Both very different, both using very different resources, but the bottom line and that what the research is supporting is just that explicit instruction, so. You know, it's all that word study. And it's interesting, in the bill, they talk about third grade as that retention age, but a lot of the research with science of reading shows that actually first grade is more of an indicator, um, in how kids are doing. So if we can like amp up the phonemic awareness and we can amp up the phonics and, you know, kind of embed that in everything that we do early, 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 you know, preventative, it just makes sense, so. Um, it's not super different, it's just, again, we have to do a better job of the infrastructure that we are, you know, executing everything through, so. That was kind of a long answer, but I could go on and on about that.
Yeah, well, I'm glad to hear that we've been using phonics. And instead of some new math or new, new reading or some of the experimental things that have happened through the years, some of us had that and, you know, some of it was good and some of it was not good, so, yeah. So it wouldn't be a huge change for this legislation to come through. Let's just have to see all the little pieces and.
Any other questions? Middle school, high school principals report, Katie.
Yeah, so I'll start at the end of my report here, which is, um, much of the, the first few weeks after the school year was an opportunity for me to reflect on what I had just experienced, what I'd just seen, um, kind of going over some of the, the input that I had gotten from educators, et cetera. And so with that, uh, reflection and, and meeting with, uh, the, the teachers, um, really trying to look at some things that can benefit student learning in the building. And one of the things I think the board is gonna wrestle with today a little bit, or at least call a vote on, is, is looking at our cell phone policy. And that was, um, it was very clear from just observing what was going on in the classrooms that although cell phones can be very helpful, it is not helpful to our students for them to be ubiquitous in the classroom. So trying to get, uh, student attention back, uh, on learning and away from their cell phone is one of the policies that we looked at. Now, one of the things that I think I'm gonna chalk up to a little post-COVID, um, issue is attendance seems to be rather voluntary at times, uh, with different students and teacher, or parents. So trying to, um, clean up how we address that with our parents and also with our students, making sure that we're communicating at a high level so that when a parent finds out that their student is visually truant, that's not a surprise to them. Um, so we've looked at, um, the way we notify parents, some of the language that we use to notify parents, and this is the process that we use, um, in dealing with attendance. Um, checking in, checking out process got really loose, so looking at what the board policy is on that, seeing how we can be more compliant and more in line with that. Bottom line is how do we keep our kids in school focused on learning is, is what we're trying to address with, with some of this stuff. Um, and then let it be, uh, as you have become well aware of, literacy is something where the state is really putting a lot of focus on. Um, I don't know if it was coincidental or if it one prompted the other, but we're really looking at our literacy, uh, practices in the middle school, high school. And some of that is prompted by anecdotal, uh, situations that I became aware of throughout the year. Some of our students have struggled with reading, and what are we doing? How do we impact that? Um, it became clear to me that we, as a building, need to grow our capacity and to be able to offer interventions that are appropriate for the, for those challenges that we see with our students. So, um, I, I take responsibility in learning that first, right, as the educational leader of the building. What do I know about interventions? How do I build my capacity? How do I build my capacity to work with the staff here in, in coming up with what are going to be best practices for our students? Um, I do, I have been working with someone who has had input on this, um, the science of reading, um, legislation at the, uh, at the state Capitol, listening to her input, she was working with us on PLC. Um, and at the same time, putting that through a filter of what works best for Elgoma. Because if it's just, uh, just what's best for everybody, but it doesn't work for our kids, I'm not on board with that. I really want it to be what works for us here in this building. Um, and that's probably what I've got to offer for you tonight.
The middle school and high school offers its own sort of set of challenges in that kids can come in from other places, so they haven't necessarily come through our own system. And what you were talking about and having everything coordinated between grades and everything, if they've had a different experience with the, you know, the earlier years of their education out, outside of the public school, or they moved from a different place or whatever, then you get them and have to deal with whatever level they're coming in with.
The thing that, that is becoming painfully obvious to me is if a student is struggling with literacy, they're struggling at school. And they're here for seven hours a day doing something that they're not good at, and it affects their entire approach to school. So it's something that we really want to be able to address in a positive way with our students.
You know, oftentimes, we get these kids, we don't even get them for the full school year. They're in and out within a school year, so that's, um, on the tool.
Do the best we can while we have them, right? Thank you. Okay, um, Pathfinder, Elgoma Venture Academy report, Katie.
So with myself and Abio are contracting with Drew Richmond. He is the owner of Twenty-Six Coaching, uh, a certain day, um, to do some strategic planning for some long-term goals for ABA. Um, he's looking, he's helping us look at more of the organizational infrastructure of ABA. Um, and when our grant runs out, kind of how are we gonna sustain, sustain ABA and keep it going? Um, we're each doing individual coaching with him, and I remember something last week, it was phenomenal, so. Um, I was a little nervous going in, I'm like, what is this guy all about? But, um, it was a two-hour session and we got through a lot of stuff, so, um, that's really positive. And then we're going to contract with Mandy Freilich, so she is the new, what's her title?
Director of Philanthropy and Innovation.
Yeah, for the Elgoma Foundation.
Correct.
Um, and we're going to contract with her for more of the educational leadership coaching side of things. Um, so we're meeting with her in a couple of weeks. And then Abby and I are also gonna be working on a school playbook for ABA. Um, Nick Protaske from Wisconsin Charter School Network had come in twice this year. He interviewed, um, students, he interviewed staff, he interviewed parents and the board, kind of all of the perceptions of ABA. Um, things that are going well, things that they would like to see improved, and he put together this awesome report for us, um, so we can kind of see where things are at. And then he is helping us put together a playbook on just kind of how ABA is run. So during advisory time, what does it look like, what does it feel like? So if we have any teacher come in, we can give them this playbook, and this is how things should be going. If we have a sub, this is how things should be going. Um, it's gonna take a long time, 'cause it's every step of the day we have to do the play for. What does it look like, what, what should the kids be doing, what does it feel like? So, um, it didn't take a while, but we're gonna get a good hit on that this summer, hopefully. Um, Pathfinder, um, we're just looking into more resources for academic opportunities for our kids. Right now, it's a lot of packet work, which gets to be mundane. A lot of the kids like it because it's, I mean, cut and dry, but some of the kids obviously get pretty bored with it. And now that we have a partnership with RBA, there's gonna be a lot more opportunities for the kids to learn virtually, so. Um, so Lexi and I are gonna work on this summer. And then childcare updates, um, the state came in and did their initial inspection. We got approved to have thirty-six kids. Right now, we have thirty-two, not thirty-three, um, kids enrolled, so we have rooms, but really only for school-age kids. Our infant room is maxed out for human capacity, we can only have four there. Um, our one, two-year-old room is maxed out due to space, and our three, four-year-old room is maxed out due to space, so.
So the babies, you need more staff.
Yes.
That's what you need.
Human. Human capacity, yeah. You can only have four babies to one human, so, and big humans.
He's got, he's got three, two kids, full-time, or?
Um, some are full-time, some come two, three days a week, but most of them are there every day.
Okay.
Um, I think that's just about it. The initial inspection went really well. Um, the only things that we really have to work on are more of. The only things that we really have to work on are more of the summer maintenance projects. They painted the cement out on the playground and it's all chipping off. They didn't use any outdoor paint for any of the outdoor stuff. So we have to power wash and redo everything. And then there's like one fence that we need to redo.
So are we still, everything needs staff? We still need staff, okay. So you guys are spending a lot of time helping out.
So if we had another staff member for the infants, if we could take on four more?
Three more for space.
Okay.
Yes.
I imagine there's a waiting list with mothers that have families that have infants?
Some that aren't even born yet.
Other questions for Kim? Thank you. And now Special Ed Wellmister Report.
I really don't have much this month. Two really quick things. First of all, you may have saw on the CISA contract, I think it was last month, that there was a physical therapist on there. Previously, we had contracted with Pervia for OT and PT. But I'm working with CISA seven to see if they can find us an OT, PT within their contract. So it's not really 100% official right now, but it's in the works. And it would most likely be a cost savings for us by close to $10 an hour, I think. The only other thing, speaking of staffing, is we're always looking for special education peer professionals. So if you know anybody who would be a good fit, please don't come reach out to me. We encourage them to apply.
And what is the requirement for that kind of?
For a peer professional? There's some different routes. Preferred would be to have an associate's degree or 42 post-secondary credits. However, there are some other pathways. You could take like a competency assessment like Work Keys or do you remember what some of the other assessments are?
Care pro.
Care pro, yeah.
Pro educator.
Mm-hmm. So those would be like the minimum requirements. So we work with individuals that are interested.
So really, the first thing is if somebody's interested, they should contact you. And then you can try and see if there's a pathway that would work for them. Okay.
Any other questions for Lori?
Okay, well, keep going. Committee reports. We have one meeting, Policy and Practice Committee meeting on the 14th. That's it for a while, until Jesse decides.
Till the next update comes out.
Yeah. So you didn't have to look at our calendars. We did 52 policies. Some got copies of. If there was no change, we didn't give you a copy. So you want to expound on that? Yeah, I can actually, I can do it right now. And then, and then I won't have to delay once we get to. So as she said, if it was new or significant revision, you guys all have it. So if you have any questions on that, you should adjust that to hand. If there were no changes, you know, there was no changes. And then the little in-between ones that we didn't feel were worth wasting paper or cutting trees down is what I'm going to be going through with you now. So 8462, child abuse and neglect. There was just, there was no significant changes, just a little bit more, a paragraph that specified the staff training required a little bit more. 8500, food services. It was changed to the district administrator. And they're also, they added a little bit more of a dietary modification section for kids that might have an allergy or something like that. So they just added in that that could be in there. 8600, transportation. What was added in that was that video and audio surveillance.
Can be used in our buses or other transportation, which we are going to be doing.
Yeah, we're looking at purchasing them and having them installed.
In the buses and vans too?
Right now, it's just the buses. But we could definitely look at it if it fits within the budget, though. They're pretty costly to get them installed.
And then, yeah, and the policy just allows us to do it. It doesn't state that we have to. But I think it's a good idea if we can afford it.
Do you have a van?
Yeah. 8605, use of electronic wireless communication devices by district employees who operate board-owned or operated vehicles. Basically, the change in that was that any bus driver has to use the bus radio, not their personal phone, which makes total sense. Because we have radio in there for them and we don't want them getting distracted. 9700, relations with non-school affiliated groups. It was simply revised to have the district administrator be the liaison with that. And finally, 2430, district-sponsored clubs and activities. They, we removed the statement of administrative guidelines since we don't have that in this district. And then there was one paragraph that they added, which I'll read the paragraph. It didn't change really the content of the policy, but since it's a new paragraph. "The purpose of district-sponsored activities shall be to enable students to explore a wider range of individual interests than may be available in the district's courses of study, but are still related to accomplishing the educational outcomes for students as adopted by the board in policy 2131. The board encourages all students, including those students in elementary and middle school grades, to participate in such opportunities. In implementing this policy, the district administrator shall take steps to make such opportunities accessible to all students." So a lot of words that sort of say what we always have done. So that's why we didn't copy this. So those were the ones that you did not get copies of. So we will be asking for approval of all 52 when we get down to action. All right. Other items for discussion. So we're already looking at school board convention in January. Part of it is just good to get the dates down on calendars so people can be taking a look at it. And we also need to get reservations in the hotel rooms by August if we don't want to have to be a mile away or something that doesn't have a bathroom that works or something.
Okay, action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of May 22, 2023, and the Policy and Practice Committee meeting minutes of June 14, 2023.
I moved away from those minutes, pardon?
Motion made by Jennifer, do I hear a second?
I'll second, second by Ann.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to accept the bills that were in the packet as well as any other that have been presented to us.
Move.
Ann moved. Chris S., second. Questions or discussion on the bills? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. This one will be a roll call because of its budget. Is that?
That's correct.
We'll make it a roll call. I need a motion to approve the budget revisions as presented.
So move.
Motion made by Pat.
Second.
Second and by Chris B. Roll call vote, Chris B.
Yes.
Pat.
Yep.
And Jennifer.
Yep.
Chris S.
Lonnie.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. And this will also be a roll call. I need a motion to approve Fund 10 transferred to Fund 27 and/or transfer to finalize the fiscal year ending 6/30/23.
Slow move.
Motion made by Chris B. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chris S. Roll call vote, Lonnie.
Yes.
Chris S.
Yes.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Ann.
Pat. Yep.
Yes.
Chris B also say yes, motion carries. I need a motion to approve Fund 10 transferred to Fund 46. Also move. Motion made by Ann.
Yes, second.
Second by Lonnie. This will be a roll call vote, Lonnie.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Ann.
Yes.
Yes.
And also say yes, motion carries. Ann.
Pat.
Motion to approve the preliminary 2023-2024 budget.
So move.
Motion made by Pat.
Second.
Second by Chris B. Roll call vote, Chris B.
Yes.
Pat.
Yes. Yes.
Ann.
Yes.
Chris S.
Yes.
I also say yes, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the new NEOL policies, 8450.01, 8462.01, 8651, 8740. I'll move. Motion made by Ann, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Chris D. All in favor?
I think a question.
Oh.
Okay, on the personal protective equipment during pandemic epidemic events, does this policy allow the district administrator to implement this? Any discussion from the board?
I don't think there's ever anything that he would implement in that without the board. I mean, these are board policies.
It's a board policy, so it says the district administrator may incorporate requirements, so.
I think those would be incorporating the requirements that we had to bring on.
Okay.
Which, yeah.
Okay, I, it.
Which again, is like that whole policy that we are going to be looking at every six months or whatever.
Comes up in September. Okay.
So it says above it, it says through board plans and resolutions. Right above it.
Okay, yeah, right there, but then, okay, okay.
I thought I saw that as, yeah.
He can't get too crazy without us. Any other questions on that? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the revised NEOL policies, 8450, 8462, 8500, 8510, 8600, 8605, 8640, 8660, 8710, 9130, 9151, 9500, 9600, 9700, 2210, 2220, 2221, 2430, 5136, 5460, and 0100.
So move.
Okay.
All right, motion made by Pat, seconded by Chris B. All in favor?
Aye.
Ann, I need a motion to approve the NEOL policies with no changes.
Slow move.
I think I probably need to read them, but.
I was just trying to help you with the.
I appreciate the thought. Gave me a chance to catch my breath.
See?
8451, 8452, 8453, 8453.01, 8463, 8531, 8540, 8550, 8680, 8760, 8800, 8802, 8900, 9111, 9120, 9140, 9150, 9190, 9210, 9211, 9250, 9270, 9555, 9800, 9800.01, and 0175, and 3215. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Pat. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Ann, I need a motion to approve the donations for the AlGoma School District in memory of Lynn Jumbo Lorenz. 800 for the Industrial Arts Program, 800 for the Wellness Center, 800 for the AlGoma Athletic Booster Club.
I'll move. Second.
Okay, motion made by Chris S., seconded by Lonnie. Only comment I have is that's very generous and I always appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any requests for future agenda items? Then I need a motion to go into executive session under statute 19.85 subsection 1 CEFNI for the purpose of personnel matters by your staff and resignation. Seconded by Ann.
Second.
Second by Chris B. Roll call vote, Chris B.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Chris S.
Yes.
Lonnie, I also say yes.